It's, let me see, September 2nd, 2025. With that, let's call this meeting in order. And we'll start with our Chaplain prayer, our prayer from Chaplain John Rodriguez. Please come forward and give us a prayer. Is this your maiden voyage as an initial prayer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let us pray. O good and gracious God, look down on your servants today at this meeting. Bless all who are gathered here, that your will be done in all things. Please look kindly upon all in your servants, as they go about doing the work for the betterment of our city and our citizens. Give these council members the patience, the grace, the love, the compassion that they will need to make good decisions for our city. But most of all, Father, give them the wisdom of Solomon, that all their decisions be just for all involved. We ask all these things, in the name of your precious Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We'll start off with a proclamation this morning. The first one will be the proclamation of September 17th through 23rd. It's Constitution Week. September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which commemorate the occasion. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I heretofore unset my hand to cause the seal, the official seal of the City of San Angelo to be affixed to this document the second day of September 2025. Would somebody like to come up here and take a photo? Is Lisa Mailer here? With that, we'll move on to the second one. This proclamation is for Patriotism Week. The benevolent and protective order of Elks through its constitution is a patriotic order. The order promotes the ideals that the citizens of this nation live in freedom, won through the great sacrifices and many tribulations which have provided the foundation for a free, prosperous, and independent life. We realize that each generation must work to maintain freedom, otherwise through carelessness or indifference, the rights and liberties and joy may vanish. It is fitting and proper to recognize these freedoms and to honor the nation which provides it. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, the Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 8th through 14th, 2025, as Patriotism Week. And we urge all citizens to join me in the benevolent and protective order of the Elks in expression gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship with appropriate celebrations and observance. Well, so let's say a few words right here.
Okay.
Just state your name and say a few words.
Okay, Kyle Mantel. I'm currently the Lodge Secretary. Councilman Thomas is our Lodge past exalted ruler. The Elks have had a long tradition of supporting patriotism throughout our country, our military, children, our first responders and that, and we just try to strive to continue that.
Now, let's get a couple pictures.
Good morning. So it is both an honor and a privilege to stand before you today to recognize the truly extraordinary act of service, courage, professionalism by five members of the San Angelo Fire Department. On August the 10th, at approximately 11:00 a.m., a call was dispatched for an unconscious infant in OB-GYN emergency. Ladder One and Medic Six responded swiftly to the scene, not yet knowing the critical nature of what they were about to face. Upon arrival, the crew of Ladder One discovered a medical scenario that most never encounter in their careers. An infant born in Kyle, still enclosed in the amniotic sac, it's a one in 80,000 deliveries, and it was delivered in a toilet at just 26 weeks gestation. This child was no larger than the palm of your hand and was in grave danger. With skill, calm under pressure, and true dedication, Ladder One crew carefully removed the infant from the sac and immediately initiated lifesaving resuscitations. Within moments, Medic Six arrived to continue the support and the effort. Working together with seamless coordination, the team provided CPR and supplemental oxygen and rapidly transported the infant to the emergency department without delay. Their efforts were nothing short of miraculous. Thanks to their swift and decisive actions, the infant regained a pulse during transport and was transferred into the care of a hospital staff. We are proud to share that the child is expected to make a full recovery. It is difficult to overstate the gravity of this day. Without the rapid expert care delivered by these responders, the outcome could have been much tragically different. Instead, because of their dedication, their training, and a life was saved. Therefore, without hesitation, I would like to highlight the highest respect in administration. It is with extreme pride that I present the San Angelo Fire Department Lifesaving Award and Stork Badge, Stork Pen. First, I'd like to recognize the Captain of the ladder truck, CJ Naylor. Engineer Darren Wright. Each of you exemplify what it means to be a first responder. Prepared, compassionate, unwavering in the face of crisis, you're not only upheld the mission of the San Angelo Fire Department, you've fulfilled the deepest calling of this profession, to save lives. On behalf of the San Angelo Fire Department and the City of San Angelo, we thank you. Your actions will never be forgotten. Congratulations.
We'll move forward into the public comment. Members of the public comment may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meetings. Speakers will be called in order they were signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating your name and address or single member district, and limit their remarks to two minutes. Heather, have we got any public comment?
Yes, sir. Dermid Campbell.
All right, Mr. Campbell.
Good morning. My name is Dermid Campbell. I'm with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. My address is 909 Caddo Street. And I'm actually here representing constituents out of all y'all's districts. The two papers that you have, the first one with my business card attached, is in regards to wage theft, which I have brought up twice before to this council. As you'll see through it, it's occurred on county courthouse jobs, ISD jobs, military base, ASU, pretty much all throughout the city. Therefore, I'm bringing it up to the city with the bonds that were passed, over $400 million. These guidelines attached to the bonds, especially since the taxpayer money is being funded for it, I would believe the city would want to know that these funds are being distributed and not stolen from the workers who are building these institutions. Secondly, the paper with the formal complaint is licensing issues and enforcement that I have brought to the inspection department since a year or two ago, directly to the inspector, but more importantly, to the heads of the electrical inspection department, stating nonlicensed letterheads from employers stating they're using unlicensed people, TDLR issued warnings, as well as complaint stating that the electrical inspector is knowingly allowing his son-in-law to work unlicensed. All these I bring up to you because they go against state and city ordinances. So these two issues directly fall under the city, and I'm just hoping that we can actually have an honest conversation. It's neat, I shouldn't say neat, it's interesting that it's going on five months since the last correspondence in March with the city, to the heads on why licensing isn't being enforced. By San Angelo's own records, within the last five years, there has not been a single warning issued when TDLR has issued those warnings. And I even brought up the two contractors who those warnings were issued on. So how is it that I am finding this, that TDLR is issuing warnings, but our own city inspector is not? I talk to electricians every day, and I have not met one who has ever been asked for their electrical license. We have to do continuing education every year. This needs to be looked at if we want to bring in entities and business to San Angelo. We've got to respect the trades and make a level playing field for honest contractors and honest workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Trinidad Agiri.
Well, good morning, Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Alenzuela. It's good to be here, and good morning to everyone. My name is Trinidad Agiri, and I reside in Tommy's District, District Number One. Today's really an honor and a privilege for me to welcome what I call a historic moment, and it's the official announcement of the Greater Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of San Angelo. We don't want to be just an organization, but we want to be someone that is opening doors to a lot of the individuals that have come forth and asked for additional support in language and in special considerations for some of the work that are some of the issues that they are facing. We're opening these doors for entrepreneurs who have dreams bigger than their budgets, for small business owners who worked long hours and lacked a network of support, for professionals who are ready to lead, to connect, and to build a future, whose success reflects the diversity of our community. The Hispanic community, as you're well aware of, is one of the fastest-growing and most dynamic economic forces in San Angelo, and we're represent about 40% of the population or slightly over. Hispanic businesses contribute millions of dollars to San Angelo economy and create thousands of jobs in our community. Yet, we often operate without the institutional support or representation we need to really thrive. But that ends today. The Greater Hispanic Chamber of Commerce was founded with one clear mission, to empower Hispanic businesses and professionals with the tools, resources, and relationships needed for them to succeed. We're here to amplify voices, to drive innovation, and to ensure the economic opportunity is inclusive and equitable for everyone. The chamber will act as a hub. We don't want to duplicate anyone else's effort. A place where ideas are shared, partnerships are formed, and the culture is celebrated. We look forward to meeting with our congressmen, Congressman Fluger, Senator Perry, and Representative Darby, to get their input and direction, because we want to be in line with all of the entities. ASU President Hawkins has really set a standard for the Hispanic enrollment and graduation. He's received a tremendous amount of awards. So we'll be asking for his input and those things that he's done to be very successful. We'll also meet with the local businesses, Shannon, all of the other major entities out there to identify their needs and to ensure that we're on the right path. We're not going to this with a blind eye. We want to make sure we have everybody's input. Michael Dane, of course, from Costa DC, will be a valuable partner as we look at pursuing economic development opportunities. I've met with several of the Hispanic businesses that would like to come to San Angelo, and it would be a great opportunity for us to meet with them and see what their needs are. Thank you for this vision, and thank you for joining us today. Let's make history together. And gracias, and welcome to the Greater Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Trinidad, thank you for that. I think that's something we'll see you chair and pioneer, and we appreciate your input there.
Thanks, sir.
Heather, anybody else for public comment?
Shayna Hill.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Shayna Hill. I'm the Conservation Manager and CASAB Coordinator for the City of San Angelo, and I'm here on behalf of Keep San Angelo Beautiful to share some exciting news about an upcoming community event, the Fall Sweep, happening Saturday, September 27th. Fall Sweep is a citywide cleanup and beautification effort that brings together residents, local businesses, schools, and civic groups to help refresh and revitalize our neighborhoods as we head into the fall season. On top of the litter pickup, it's a day of teamwork, pride, and giving back. This is more than just a cleanup. It's about building community connections, fostering neighborhood pride, and encouraging residents to take an active role in caring for spaces that we all share. We're encouraging teams from across the city, businesses, clubs, students, and families to get involved. Registration is now open, and we'd love to see participation from every district. I'd also like to extend an invitation to all of you here, as leaders of this city, to consider forming or joining a team. Your presence would send a powerful message about the importance of civic pride and shared responsibility. I brought flyers with more information, and I'm happy to answer any questions or provide additional materials. Thank you again for your time, and I hope to see many of you on the 27th for the Fall Sweep.
Thank you, Shayna. Harry, we're going to think you're going to be our representative on that one. All right. We're not going to cut off your eight years of that. With that, Heather, do we have any more public comment?
That's all.
That's all. So we're going to close public comment. We'll move into the consent agenda. As we roll, let me see, let's go through the consent agenda. I will ask if anybody has any items they'd like to pull. Mary, I'll start with you.
No.
Karen?
No, sir.
Patrick?
No.
I want to pull item C. Harry?
No, sir.
Joe?
Mr. Hebert?
All right, that. So with that, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
So moved for all items, items A through F, excluding C. I've got a first and a second. Any public comment on the public? With that, can have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All items except C pass 7-0. Now we'll move into item C, Shane.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this one's, I would like for you to explain a little bit about this one, as it does go into a little bit of the airport, and the purpose of this and the scope of how it ties into, say, the taxiway and the fire suppression and the hangars.
Yep. As we're looking at expanding out at the airport and the area out there, one of the issues that we have is the fire suppression systems, and of course, you know, with the PFOs and PFOI issues, you know, a lot of the firefighting phones that we used to be able to use in those type of situations is no longer usable anymore. So they've kind of changed how they're having to look at fire suppression systems and hangars in the airport in general. And so, looking to try to create enough volume for expected and future growth at the airport, we're having to take, step back and take a look at the amount of water and available water that we have for firefighting and firefighting suppression systems in these, as we try to expand the airport. That's what this looks into. This takes our existing system that we have, which is, it's not a new system. We're using the existing old treatment facility out there from the 1940s.
And I've had a lot of questions about the functionality of the old treatment system when it's, where our status is with that. So I hope you're touching into that.
Sure, yeah. And, you know, there is no treatment system out there anymore. Everything comes from our central treatment plant in downtown San Angelo. And so, all of the treated water throughout the city comes from that one plant. So this is just simply there. We have an old Clearwell there, a million gallon Clearwell. And so, that's where we, basically, it's, we use it as a water storage tank for firefighting suppression. And so, it's basically purple pipe at that point, from that point on into the system, where we allow people to tap into that system for hangar suppression, office fire suppression, those type of things. Or even, we do have some fire plugs out there that the firefighters can use, that, basically, that non-potable water to, for fire suppression firefighting purposes out there. So, but again, as we're moving into the future and we're looking at this, we're limited in that capacity to what we have. We can only fill at a certain rate based off of our, you know, existing system that we have out there. And so, as we're moving along, this group is going to come in and take a look at all of that, look at the area of expansion that we're looking at currently, look at our existing flows, and again, we know we're lacking in those areas, but again, and then take and look at a secondary pumping system using emergency water from Lake Nazworthy, basically. If our general distribution system can't handle it, this will be a backup system to be able to push water, emergency water from Lake Nazworthy into this wet well. And then, from there, we'll be able to go through the fire pumping system into, basically, the fire, for all fire suppression issues at the deal, increasing our capacity. Currently, we have one 1,500 gallon a minute pump. We're looking to at least double that capacity, if not even more, up to, you know, two, 2,000 to 2,500 gallon per minute pumps for the fire suppression side, along with backup generation and some other things that we really need to do to upgrade that. Increasing pipe size coming out of that system into the airport property itself, and then through that distribution system as well.
So, would it be right to say this is an alternative to needing an immediate request for a pipeline to come all the way around to the airport?
It is. This allows us, as, of course, you know, we are expecting growth in that area of town, in that part of town, as we continue to move south. Now that we have the Lake Nazworthy sewer trunk main, and we can expand or start expanding south of the lake, we really expect things to start taking off in that area. We know we are going to have to have more potable water in that area, but currently right now, it's one of those that we have demand at the airport right now, saying we need water right now so we can build. And unfortunately, for fire suppression, that's a lot of water that we just don't have in our existing distribution system. So, as we look to expand out our distribution system over the next few years, this will allow us more time to build that out more thoughtfully and actually more fiscally responsible than just trying to throw a whole lot of money at something real fast that, again, when we start looking at extending 30-inch transmission mains and you're looking at elevated storage, you know, you're in the, you know, the 15 to 20 million dollar range. And again, we think we can get this project brought in a lot faster. And again, take care of fire suppression without using potable water. And I think that, as we look at it from a conservation-minded society here in San Angelo, where we're, you know, always looking for the next, waiting for the next rain and praying for the next rain to fill up our lakes, using a source that is not dependent solely upon our potable water system, I think is also incredibly smart as we move forward.
The second part of me pulling this, Shane, I just want to commend staff for bringing this forward. It was one of the things we discussed the first week of June, tail into May, first part of June, and what we were looking at is might have been a four, five, six-year headwind headache. We now brought it to be, and it looks like we're going to be able to provide an alternative. While I say this is probably not a permanent solution, it's a good solution to allow us to develop the airport. And I just want to commend, as we say, thank all of staff and commend them for bringing this forward as fast as you did. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Harry Thomas. Any public comment? With that said, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Item C passes 7-0. We'll move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public. When each item is discussed as outlined above, to participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they are signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellantents are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We'll move straight into item A. Excuse me. Consider ratifying Costa DC approval to terminate the existing professional service agreement between Costa DC and the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce effective September 30, 2025, and approving a new agreement to begin October 1, 2025, not to exceed an amount of 476,000 with a one-year term agreement, and authorizing the board president to negotiate and execute all related documents. Presentation by interim economic director, Michael Dane.
Morning, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the Development Corporation has a contract with the Chamber of Commerce, where the Chamber of Commerce does our outreach and recruiting. They also help us when somebody's made it clear that they're looking to locate or expand here. They do a lot of And I just want to commend, let's fix, say, thank all of staff and commend them for bringing this forward as fast as you did. With that, I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Harry Thomas. Any public comment? With that said, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Item C passes 7-0. We'll move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public. When each item is discussed as outlined above, to participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order. They are signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellantants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We'll move straight into item A. Excuse me. Consider ratifying COSA DC approval to terminate the existing professional service agreement between COSA DC and the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce effective September 30, 2025, and approving a new agreement to begin October 1, 2025, not to exceed an amount of 476,000 with a one-year term agreement, and authorizing the board president to negotiate and execute all related documents. Presentation by interim economic director, Michael Dane.
Morning, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the Development Corporation has a contract with the Chamber of Commerce, where the Chamber of Commerce does our outreach and recruiting. They also help us when somebody's made it clear that they're looking to locate or expand here. They do a lot of handholding, helping them through whatever process they're going through. Sometimes that's permitting and building, and sometimes that's searching for real estate. They, whatever a prospect needs, they try to, try to accomplish. This is a little out of sequence. Our regular contract with them runs through the end of the calendar year. They are seeking to change that to align with our fiscal year, and that's at the Chamber's request. They're going to do, attempt to do the same thing with the DMO contract that we're going to discuss later today. So, today, this item is for renewal of that contract. It says cancellation and initiation of a new agreement, but this is really renewal at an early date for a new year. And we're going to talk about key performance indicators. What do we get for the contract? And Steve is here to help us through these key performance indicators.
Mayor, council members, Steve Alanius, President and CEO of the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, 418 West Avenue B. Very excited to be here to get this opportunity to present. Obviously, it's a partnership with the city, and it's a key element to how we grow the economy and create opportunities for citizens of San Angelo. There is nothing more powerful than a good-paying job that impacts a person, a family, and a community. And I think the role that the Chamber plays in recruiting new industries, in helping and assisting existing industries, and in fostering new startups is going to be a key to San Angelo's long-term success. So I just want to touch briefly on some of the key performance indicators. And this is part of the contract that we would negotiate with the city to make sure that these indicators are met, and that there is a quarterly reporting process that we bring to the city, city council, and also to the Development Corporation. You know, obviously, the big thing is the number of jobs created. We're proposing 90 new jobs being created or retained over the next fiscal year. We're talking about $100 million in initial capital, new capital investment in the community. We're hoping that number goes higher, but I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us. Calling on 50 established businesses as far as the business retention program, working with SARMA, which is the San Angelo Regional Manufacturing Association, in terms of helping them, continued development with workforce. Obviously, that has grown over the years. You know, five, six years ago, workforce was probably number three or four on the list as far as what businesses and industries were looking for. Today, it's almost, it's probably one or two. Obviously, a big part of this and why the increase in request for funding is we want to be more proactive in going after prospects and new businesses. We've got an outstanding team with Michael Looney and Mike Berry leading the charge with economic development. Each one of them brings a unique skill set to the table. And I would really like to turn Michael Looney loose on the state of Texas and have him go after and recruit key industries for our community. Right now, we're playing catch, meaning we have to wait till something kind of falls in our lap. And I think that's a, that, that long-term is going to hurt our community if we're not out there proactively seeking new industries and new businesses to come here. Second, Mike Berry brings a great analytic skills to the table in terms of providing in-depth analysis, and that's something that we want to expand on and make sure that we have opportunities, that we're looking at what we have, and how do you connect those disparate dots out there to bring those things together? So we're excited about that. Obviously, it's a very comprehensive economic development strategy and program, and be happy to try to answer questions as it relates to the KPIs or other elements of economic development that you'd like to ask.
Steve, thank you very much, and it's, I just want to say, on behalf of this side of Council on the Dice, we're very happy to be moving forward with the relationship that we've started off. I think it's going to be very important for the success of any city, for not only the council, but the DMO and the Chamber all to be in lockstep moving forward. I think we've seen those initial steps here. I'm like you, I think it's time we quit playing catch and we go out and pursue those things. We've got some great things that are in the oven, that are baking right now, that will literally change and move, move San Angelo to be a much bigger point on the map in the next four, eight, 12 years. It's just going to be some great things. But we have to pull all those other things that keep us interdependent upon each other and moving forward. I just say, I want to say, I'm going to throw this one over, going to call an audible, and I'm going to throw it to Tommy. Talk a little bit about the BREP and your calls, and explain to the people a little bit that. Tommy, will you kind of lead that?
Sure. Well, I'll let Steve say what he's going to do, but, but BREP essentially is working with local, existing, ongoing business concerns, and something that we haven't done as much in the past. And so, Steve, I'll let you, since this is your, your show, really, but I'll let you walk through that.
Excellent question, council member. Business retention, if you look at it in terms of an entire economic development project or program, 80 to 85% of your jobs created are going to be created by your existing industries. So you want to create that environment where they feel welcome, that, you know, obviously, capital goes where it's welcome and stays where it's, where it's being used. And so, San Angelo has an excellent reputation as a pro-business community. We want to continue that, but want to be a little bit more strategic in terms of making regular calls on a monthly basis to existing industries and major employers, but then also doing what I call a focus on business event quarterly with the city council, key business leaders, where we just showcase that industry or business and basically show them the love of how much we appreciate them being a part of this community. I know, and I'm going to use the example of what happened with the flood on July 4th. Michael Looney has been out calling on businesses impacted on the north side of town, reaching out to them and checking in with them. That's the type of effort that pays huge dividends for this community, because people that have invested their lives into making their business successful are people who've invested in this community, those businesses. They want to know that they're recognized and appreciated. And so I think that's a prime example of the skills and the skill sets that this team brings to the table for business retention. But it is a critical component, and obviously, one of those elements is calling on corporate headquarters. We have not done that in a number of years, and I think that's something that, as part of this program, we want to make sure that we implement, that we are calling on those corporate headquarters. And we want this, you know, again, sending that message, we appreciate them being in the community, but also looking for those opportunities for new missions, new operations that, we are competing against other communities in the country and internationally. And so I think it's a big part of an economic development program, and very excited about what it's going to, what fruit it's going to bear for us.
Mayor, let me expand on one thing Steve said. 80 to 85%, according to the SBA, of your new jobs are created by your already existing businesses. One thing that we have as an arrow in our quiver is the fact that we have the Development Corporation that can help if a business has a very specific code, NACs code, used to call it SIC code, that they can assist if that business may need some assistance with respect to a grant, with respect to maybe helping buy down an interest rate on a loan. So, that, I think, too, would be a part of Steve's initiative. So that's something that, we used to see, as a council, we used to see several, more than several of those a year, and doesn't matter why that slowed down, but maybe that can pick back up again through this, this effort and this initiative. So, Steve, thanks. I got one question for you. I didn't see anything, and maybe, maybe it's the way you intended it, but I didn't see anything in terms of a key performance indicator with respect to increasing our tax base. That is, I think, one of the, one of the very foundational aspects of economic development. So, can you talk us through some KPIs?
Yes. Yeah, great question. Obviously, you want to see increases in the tax base, and that's where you see, when you talk about $100 million in capital investment in the community, that's going to create additional tax revenues. And obviously, as policymakers, you're obviously balancing between commercial and residential property tax. And right now, we're skewed more toward residential, and the idea is to grow the commercial property tax base, that it will take a load off of your residential property tax and put it on commercial. I am pretty optimistic that over the next several years, we're going to be able to impact that in a very dramatic way, that I think is going to benefit not only the residential taxpayers, but also the community as a whole. And so that's a key strategy. And then also, sales tax. And you want to see that growing in the community. You want to see people spending money in your community. That benefits not only those local small businesses, but also benefits the city because of the half-cent sales tax and what it generates in terms of revenue for, to do programs like economic development and other things. And so, those are things that we're very aware of, and we're trying to make sure that we're impacting and growing those things, because you're either, your community's either growing and expanding or shrinking and declining, and we definitely want to be on the growing and expanding side of the proposition.
Steve, I have a question for you. One, to what you were talking about with the businesses that were affected, you know, during the flood and stuff. And I worked with Michael Looney on some of those. And I followed up with his initial calls with them, and one example is Tricor Steel. They were, they're located within the city limits, but they didn't qualify for the trash pickup, the debris pickup, because they were, you know, commercial. But by having that dialogue with them, that, that was able to be done for them. And it's real, that's a direct result of that communication and that getting in with their well-being. And when they weren't, were about to consider leaving San Angelo, now they're staying. So, that, what Michael is doing, this Michael, other Michael is doing other great things too, that personal touch will impact San Angelo by quite, several million dollars just by them staying. And enough that he sent me a text, a picture of the debris being removed. And so just that little personal deal can tilt the scale back to you, back to us. Now, on that capital investment secured, you've got 100 million. Is that guaranteed, or is that just a really hopeful?
That's, nothing's guaranteed, council member, as you know, but we are, we feel very confident that we can achieve that and hopefully more.
What's the timeframe on that?
Within this next fiscal year.
Really? All 100 million or a proportion?
Well, obviously, depending on the scope and size of the project, those are, could be phased in over a number of years. But we're hoping, with what we have in the pipeline, that we would see at least a minimum of 100 million invested in the community within the next 12 months.
Okay. Not to put you on the spot here, but what is the, what's the impact to our bottom line with that? I know it's not a straight 100 million, but what would that, what kind of impact? Because that's numbers we're not used to hearing.
I have not calculated that. I know that's something we probably need to do a better job of with this type of investment, what the return, the net gain in terms of property tax for the city, but we can come up with that number for you. I don't want to misspeak today, but I think we can come up with that number for you in terms of what the yield is and property tax for the, for the city. I also want to, Mary, compliment you for reaching out to those businesses on the north side that were impacted. That, you know, that had a huge impact, and that sends a real strong message. And again, that's part and parcel to the business retention program. And I think the Focus on Business event that we're going to be doing, those events we're going to be doing, is going to be a good chance and opportunities for each one of the city council members to express appreciation, you know, get to know folks on a one-on-one basis, so that in the future, they can pick up the phone and say, hey, Mayor, I need some help, or, you know. And so that's, that's the type of dynamics that you want to see happen in a community where people feel comfortable reaching out and saying, I need help.
Well, good. I'm glad you're here, Steve.
Karen, have you got any questions? Move down the dice. Patrick?
Do you have an idea of how many of those KPIs you've met in the last year?
You know, I've been here eight months now. And so I'm, you know, I know there are specific things that the economic development contract called for them to do. I couldn't go back and specifically identify what they've done this past year. I know there've been several things that have moved forward. Some of these are new KPIs, some of these are being memorialized in a KPI, kind of, you know, we're going to track these things moving forward. And so that's, you know, Michael, Michael Looney can maybe answer some of those questions of what's been done in previous years.
And then on that, with the, we talked about a lot more events, things like that, are you, is this contract going to enable you to hire more people, or just be able to send them more places? Like, it feels like you're, some of your KPIs, I don't know what they were doing, but it sounds like it's a lot of work with just Mike and Michael.
Well, I'm also involved with it. This is, this is an area I have a lot of passion about. A key element is obviously sending folks, you know, Michael to events, site selector events, getting in front of site selectors. He's very dynamic and meeting with people one-on-one. But then also shepherding those deals as they come. And so we've got several projects that are in the pipeline that Michael is shepherding now through the process. And I've sat in on his phone calls, and he has built a tremendous relationship with these prospects, which is what you want to see. And so, in the bigger part, we're trying to, you know, really lay out, here's the KPIs that we're going to do for this coming year. This is what we want to be measured on, and this is what we want to deliver.
And so it sounds like, I mean, kind of from that, it sounds like the majority of this will actually go towards just attracting businesses and not just labor, labor rate. I mean, is that my?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So it sounds like the majority of this increase is going to go straight to generating business and not just hiring three more staff to do.
No, of course, yeah. The Chamber, I will tell you, runs very lean, and I think that's a good philosophy to operate from. And when you run lean, I always tell folks, when you have no money, you get very creative, right? And so, our goal is to become very creative in terms of finding ways to do things. It's a, and recognizing it's a partnership. And we, I think we bring certain elements to the table, along with the city and COSA DC, to the table to make this work. And that's what really excites me about where we're going to be able to go over the next couple of years.
No, I think it's great. I think that's, I mean, let, Michael has done great. He was one of the first people I met when I was on city council, and he, I don't think you'll find any of us that don't want to grow San Angelo business-wise, because it helps everything. And so I think this is well-deserved and probably should have been done in years past.
Thank you.
At least a little bit of help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Harry?
Well, I wasn't going to get involved in this conversation, but I will, because I think Michael and Mike are some of the best things that's ever happened to this particular community overall. What they've done in the last two or three years is just an inkling of what's going to happen in the next five to 10 years for this community. So, from my perspective, I want to make sure that this particular partnership continues with Michael Dane and COSA DC Board, works with the Chamber so that we can bring these things to the city council as we've got these opportunities. So, thanks, Steve. Thanks for being in San Angelo. Michael, thank you so much. You and I have been together since my, early on in my career, so I appreciate what you do. And I think this, this partnership is, is, is going to grow. So, thank you.
Mr. Self?
I'm good.
Reverend Hebert?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement.
So I've got a first to say what I like. Daniel, have you got any comments?
I do have a comment. This is a big increase from last year to this year. It's a big increase.
Yes, sir.
And right now, with what's happening, meaning with our state legislators, all the changes that keep happening, we are having our expenditures limited. The services that we provide are going to be quite limited. We have to start looking at where we can cut back. And in some areas, probably, that we're not going to be comfortable doing what we have to do. And I say all this because the onus and desperation that I feel is that you guys are really going to have to step up and make sure that the KPIs are met. We'll meet on a quarterly basis. Mary, you had a very, you asked a very good question. I think if anything, productivity is going to be key for us in the coming years. Meeting on a quarterly basis, we'll be monitoring this very carefully to make sure that the growth has been there. The KPIs are working as stated. If not, how can we tweak it? What is going wrong? What can we change? But again, we're going to count a lot on you guys, you know, the Chamber, as far as these contracts, not just this one, we're about to talk about the DMO as well. Tourism, the sales tax revenues that comes into our community is going to be huge for us also. So again, the KPIs you have there, great. We look forward to its performance, and we'll be monitoring that very closely as well. So again, we're putting a lot of faith and trust in you, the city council is, by the big increase you guys are getting for this coming year. So, again, just wanted to make sure that, Mary, council members, know that we are going to be watching this very carefully as well, to make sure the performance is there.
Daniel, great, great, great statement. And obviously, transparency and accountability is a big part of that. Anytime you take tax money, there is a, there is a intended implicit contract in deliverables. And I think we're very comfortable in making sure that we're going to be able to deliver these in such a way that I think everybody's going to be pleased, and it's going to work out really well. And obviously, recognizing what's going on in the Texas Legislature as they continue to compress property tax, that is a challenge. And again, that's why I think those roles now are more important than ever before, because if we can grow that tax base and do some things with the sales tax, it's going to benefit the city, and it's going to kind of help steer that, you know, some of that compression that you see being proposed in the Texas Legislature.
Yes, sir. That's why performance is going to be very key, not just this year, but the coming years as well.
Absolutely.
Look forward to working with you on that.
I have a first from Tommy Hebert and a second from Harry Thomas. Do we have any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the Chamber contracts, say aye. Any opposed? With no nays, item A passes, seven zero. Moving to item B, discussion and possible action regarding the Destination Marketing Organization contract. Number one, presentation of the Destination Marketing Organization by Vice President Jeremy Barts. Item two will be considered approving a contract with the San Angelo DMO. Hotel occupancy tax receipts to be used for eligible activities and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Presentation manager by Daniel. So let's go first with Jeremy and then follow up with you, Daniel. Jeremy, you're on.
Before Jeremy gets up here, Steve Alanius, President CEO of the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, I'm going to make the hard ask so he can get to be the hero here. So obviously, in conjunction with the conversation we had with the economic development, the DMO activities is really critical in terms of driving new people to visit, spend their money, and go back home, which is always a great proposition for any community. Very excited about some of the things that we have that we're working on, that we're going to be bringing to the table, and obviously, going to be talking to you as policymakers about opportunities that may happen over the next 12 months. This contract's been in existence for a number of years at this dollar amount. And so what I'm asking for is an increase to $1,049,498, I believe, somewhere in that figure. I think that'll allow us to, again, to do some of these things. It'll make us, continue to make us competitive in terms of attracting new events, sporting events, and also associations. That's the first request. The second request is, there has been what has, what I've been been made aware of as a clawback provision that the city had in conjunction with the DMO contract. Currently, and this been, this has been there for a number of years, and currently, there's about a $17,000 clawback number that exists with the with the existing contract with the DMO and the city. And my request would be that we would eliminate or forgive that $17,000 clawback with the new contract, which would begin October 1. And again, our goal is to get our budgets in line with the city budget cycle so that we're all on the same page and working at the same same rate and speed. And so with that, I'd be happy to try to answer questions about that, or Jeremy can answer some questions about some of the things that he's been doing the last quarter in terms of the DMO activities.
I think we're good. So have you got a question? Anybody have a question? Michael, were you going to make a comment?
Mayor, this item follows in format similar to the COSA DC item, where we're keying on the key performance indicators. The success we have had in this contract in the past is rooted in those quarterly conversations we have, where they bring to us what it is their efforts have been and what they think their efforts are going to be in the in the next quarters. And so we could, we plan to continue that here. And we have key performance indicators listed, if you'd like to go through those or have information about those. But the key there is that quarterly cycle where we talk to one another about these, these are the results we've gotten.
Michael, before you leave, I want you to talk a little bit about the clawback and why that happened and how those things happens where we don't make the moves at the end of the year that we should, similar to what we did with council.
Okay. Clawback is rooted in monies we have advanced to them that they have not spent. Ordinarily, if money didn't have a restricted nature, that we would have a lot more latitude there. But occupancy tax is restricted in its nature. And so we advance to them, cut them a big check early in the year to help them with cash flow issues, but we expect all of that money to be used in accordance with the contract and in accordance with state, the state act, which controls, creates the restrictions for occupancy tax revenue. And so, go ahead. Were you about to say something?
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess I'd be curious to hear, you know, specifics on the waiver forgiveness, but the contract provides that unspent funds would come back because they are hotel occupancy tax restricted. So they can only be used for certain purposes that are listed out in the act. And so I guess if we say you're still going to spend them for those purposes, they don't necessarily have to come back to the city, but we have to be able to account for that. But I don't think we could flat out just waive it or forgive it and say, yes, you can keep it and not use it on hotel tax approved items, so.
Right. So we get that with the definition, but where I'm going to is sometimes at the end of the year, if you'll watch our budgets with Tina, we'll do lots of carryovers and votes for carryovers of things, just to make sure, although we didn't spend it, we have it earmarked for something.
Right.
And there's times, I think, with hotel tax that our transition from one year to the following year didn't go, and we sit back and we look at items like that, and it puts us in a jam. And I hate the fact that this clawback has been going on for how many years?
Forever.
Yeah. And so we, we need to clean the slate, but we need to definitely, you know, or be very definitive in our terms. And I appreciate you for saying, if it is hotel tax, that's what it has to be used on. But we just need to be very well-defined in our expectations of carryover and non-carryover, because I don't want anybody on this council to have to deal with it again in future councils.
Mayor, you made a good point. The key word that you used was earmarked. If we get to the end of the year and a lump of money is earmarked, we're waiting on that invoice, or we're going to buy that software, then we come to council. When it's an internal issue, we come to council and say, hey, we've got this, this money tied up in a purchase order. The project's not going to complete before the end of the fiscal year, or didn't complete before the end of the fiscal year. We need that money carried over. We can do the same, go through that same process with the with the Chamber in this contract. Council retains that authority to do that. So that can happen. In this case, we're not aware of an earmark for that money. However, if they were to say, we got $17,000 worth of software we're going to buy, which is directly related to occupancy tax production, that that's something the council could consider.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Michael. Steve, you got one more comment?
Just one more comment.
One third more comment?
Yeah, just to the point about the hotel occupancy tax. I've been doing this for a long time, have operated CVBs or DMOs as part of the Chamber contract, very aware of the laws that regulate and control how that money can be expended. Never had an issue misappropriating or misspending that money in categories that could not be spent. So I want you, as policymakers, to rest assured that we're going to make sure that the money's accounted for, and second, is spent appropriately in ways that it can be spent.
Thank you, Steve.
There is an option for a way to accomplish that. It's not forgiveness, but it is an option to allow them to retain $17,000 as a fund balance.
Okay.
Right now, we advance that money, and we don't authorize a restricted fund balance or a fund balance made up of occupancy tax dollars. That could happen with with your direction. Or if you wanted, at the next quarterly meeting, they could bring us a proposal for how they'd like to address that, and then we bring it back to council for action.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
The key item today, though, I'm not sure how much action we could take on the 17. Brandon would have to tell us, because we're posted for the contract itself.
Yeah, as to the the current contract, I'm not sure we could take action on that, but in the new contract, we can address the clawback to
Carryover.
... in the future, yeah.
All right. We'll look for Daniel's and your direction on that when we get to that point after Jeremy does his presentation.
I'm going to ask Brian, Jeremy Barts, Vice President, Destination Marketing Organization with Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to ask Brian to go ahead and pull up our presentation. I did bring you all some paper copies. I wasn't sure if they still have this pulled up or not from a couple of weeks back. So you don't have to look at the paper if you don't want. I can kind of share with you some of the things that we've done over the last first two quarters of the year. But first up, through 2025 through Q2, as of right now, we've had a little over 800,000 total trips into the city of San Angelo. We use a software called Datify. Datify tracks essentially where people are coming from, what they do when they come into town, and gives us a general idea of how long they stay. Okay? That software is key to everything that we do on a daily basis to understand where our marketing efforts should be emphasized, where we should spend more of our money, your money, the sales tax money that we have here, to get more people here. So they've stayed an average of two and a half days. That's great hotel occupancy tax for us, right? A little over a million, 1.9 million visitor days total. This year, what I have seen that is is most impressive to me is that business travel seems to be coming back. In historic past, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday has always been our number one leading category. Weekend travel has been big for us. What I'm seeing now is that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are starting to catch up. That tells us that business travel is kicking up, and you'll also see that reflected in our occupancy numbers. That's something that we can go back to and say, okay, correlation data, it's all showing the same. Our demographics will not likely change. That 45 to 64 age range is typically going to be our number one, but I want you to see the 25 to 44 is starting to catch up. Now, it takes time, but that tells us that the younger crowd is starting to find more in San Angelo that they want to do. So with the help of some of these improved venues and improved facilities, we're going to see that continue to increase as well, because those folks now have the ability to travel. They want to get out. They want to see what our city has to offer. Our sales bookings through June of 2025 are 67, with 14,400 room nights sold so far this year. One key that I wanted to make sure that everybody on the council got to hear is that we did win the West Texas Judges Convention for April of 2027. That was a huge win for us. And if you didn't know anything about it, that's a roughly 350-person group, plus spouses, plus additional sponsors and everybody else coming into the city of San Angelo in April of 2027. Now, why is that important? Well, April of 2027, that's, that's how long it takes to get a lot of these groups now. We're not getting, I can't call up an association today and say, hey, would you come and have a, a meeting in San Angelo or a convention in San Angelo? A lot of them are planning two and three years in advance. We were asked to submit an RFP on a specific event that'll take place in 2028. Unfortunately, due to their regulations, their requirements, we needed 175-person hotel, full-service hotel for that group. We didn't have that right then. So unfortunately, we had to kind of run away from that RFP. We hate to do that, but that's how far out that was, was even to 2028. So again, with with regard to our reach and as far as the marketing piece of this, you know, when you hear marketing, you hear advertising, a lot of people equate them to be the same. They are not the same. Our marketing reach is well beyond just our standard ads. It is our sales efforts. It's our promotional efforts. It's everything that we do on a daily basis. I have a team of roughly three people with Lynda Braddell and the Visitor Center, who does a phenomenal job for anybody that walks in the door. I have John Agati out on the sales force as well, and Carter Rowe, who just recently joined us. They are outselling San Angelo at every opportunity. It doesn't matter where they are, that's what they're doing. But as far as our advertising goes, we're sticking with the keys. For the most part, we stay within our realm. We know where these people are being touched in terms of our ads, and therefore, we put our placements into those areas. Longer, longer the years of the kayakers on the river, that's not a bad ad campaign, but we wanted to do something different. We wanted to make a splash. This particular year, this year for 2025, we have done full-page, high-quality ads, wherein years past, we would do third-page ads, do multiple of them. We decided to narrow our focus. This shotgun approach was not working. So we went after specific markets. We have seen dividend returns on that by a large number. And I'll show you, when we talk about targeted ad attribution, part of your paperwork or part of your packets that you have is a website attribution report for you that we use through Datify. We targeted ads using Datify this year to actually get people interested in coming and then also be able to track whether or not they did come. I know that sounds kind of strange. When you put an ad out in a magazine or a newspaper, you have no idea, really, whether a person came because of that ad. But what you can see with that, that website attribution report is, they interacted with the ad, they went straight to our website, and on behalf, and because of that, they came to this city. Now, it could have been, they were driving down the road, trying to find something to do as they were headed to Albuquerque. Totally fine. We don't care. Bottom line is, they saw our ad, they came to the city of San Angelo, and they spent a night in our hotel, or multiple nights in our hotels. That's our goal. That's what we're after, and that's why this targeted ad attribution is so key to us. And then finally, we have continued our partnership with Dylan Hancock, Joel Braden-Harris, and Ty Harris for 2025. All three of these young men are likely to go back to the NFR unless something strange happens in the next 28 days. All three of these young men will be back in Las Vegas, wearing that brand on their shirts every single night, everywhere they go. And I don't know how much your social media acumen is, but everywhere I turn, that's all I see. Every time you turn on, if you pull up Instagram, Facebook, whatever it is, these three are out there promoting us in every way possible, and we couldn't be more thankful to have them as part of our team. So with that, I'll entertain questions.
Jeremy, I'll just start off with going, it's, I'm glad you're, DMO does a very important thing as far as recruiting those events that come here.
Yes, sir.
Like the Judges Convention. Those are core things that bring people in, and it's when there's a multiplier of how much a person spends a day, including hotels and meals, these things add up really quick. It's not really to the city's huge financial advantage, other than a little bit of tax revenue and sales tax, but what it does provide to all the local businesses is almost immeasurable.
It is.
The hotels, the restaurants, the convenience stores, as you roll through this whole thing, we're all, and I'll use this word again, very interdependent upon what you do with the DMO. And I want to say thank you for, for targeting what we do. I sometimes think we get carried away, and we do a lot of things good. I want to focus on the few things that we can do exceptionally well. Supporting this and going out with our DMO the way you do is something I've seen a lot of focus the past couple of years that you've stepped in. I want you to say, I appreciate it. With that, I'll open it up to the dice. Should anybody have any questions, I'll start down here with Mary.
Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Hello, Jeremy. So we've kind of got two parts here with the DMO from what Steve was talking about and what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
I kind of want to go back to those KPIs on that. Is that better for you? Is that better for Steve?
I'm good with whatever you want to do.
Is that, all right.
See if I can
Well, so I want to make sure we stay on topic for what's on the DMO agenda item versus what was on the Chamber, and those two can't be
Well, no, I mean, this is, it was about the
DMO KPIs.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, my deal was, it's going to be, so I've got a kid in youth sports. Youth sports is a big deal to me. I think youth sports is a multi-billion dollar industry.
Yes.
On one of them, you had, yeah, so six sports tournaments and six events at city-owned facilities. Are those considered the same, or those considered separate?
Those will, we'll consider those separate. Sports tournaments for us are going to be completely separate from booking events at city-owned facilities.
Okay. I, I think that's extremely low. I mean, why are we shooting so low on that when there's 52 weekends a year and kids I mean, why are we shooting so low on that when there's 52 weekends a year and kids are going somewhere every weekend?
So I'll speak to that for you. One reason why we've shot a little bit low. I did reach out to the Abilene CBB, okay, so that everybody, I mean, we'll use full transparency here. I reached out to the Abilene CBB, knowing that they have the Dodge Jones, okay? They have a large indoor youth sports facility that we currently do not have. When I looked at their specifics, I asked Rob specifically for how many events they book within that particular venue on an annual basis. They're booking anywhere from 11 to 14 since 2023, when that building was essentially, we'll call it profitable, okay? So from that point to now, they're only booking up to 14 events a year with that type of facility. We don't currently have that facility, so my idea was to say, we'll come back and say, we can do our outdoor youth sports where we have baseball, softball, soccer. We have a lot of those facilities. However, we don't have the ability to host a large volleyball or basketball tournament, other than through the schools. That's the only place that we can host those currently. Doesn't mean that's always going to be there, but that's the reason for the kind of a low number. I will tell you that the total number of room nights being a little bit smaller, when you look at his, again, you look at his totals, that's an average. That's an average of those events, those tournaments that they host on, you know, all the way through the year. It's an average of about 250 room nights per event. So it's a little low. We'd like to see it higher. Obviously, I'm going to do everything that I can to make it higher. My kids did the same thing. I mean, we traveled from here to San Antonio, here to Austin, here to Fort Worth, here to McKinney, everywhere you can think of, and we'd play in convention centers to high school gyms. It didn't matter. We want that here, but we've got to have the facility in order to be able to do it.
I agree with you on that, and that's, yeah, that's something I'm looking at as well. That's what, to me, that's a low number for a city of our size. But yeah, it may be tough to do with our facilities that we have. So how do we, how do we? We spent a lot on Texas Big Sports Complex back when it was done, you know, years ago, and I know from some of the people that have talked to me that have come there and hosted tournaments, it's started running down some, so they're going elsewhere. What is it going to take to fill that more?
It's a great question, Patrick. So one of the challenges we have, like anything, we've got to build the relationships with these different sporting events, and we have not done that up until now. This budget will allow us to go after those different associations and events by building those relationships. And it's a long-term process. I've done this several times, and you got, but we've got to start. And so this coming year, we've budgeted close to $20,000 to go out and start recruiting and building relationships with the youth sports, whether it's soccer, softball, baseball, volleyball, basketball. But you've got to show up at their events, you've got to show up at their meetings and associations to build those relationships. And then to your point, as we continue to develop and refurbish what we have, we continue to have a stronger selling point to these, to these groups. Obviously, we've got the hotel rooms that are available, and so now we've just got to build the relationships and then also start promoting the facilities that we have with the idea that we may have new things coming that can attract these groups, these tournaments basically to come here.
Yeah.
Comment on this?
Just for edification on this, when we were talking about the outdoor sports complex, Texas Bank Sports Complex, a week after the flood, that facility was, as we all know, hit pretty hard with water. We hosted, I say we, the city hosted, I'm not saying DMO. The city hosted the All-Stars Tournament for the Girls Youth Fast Pitch Association. It was outstanding. I would like to commend our Parks and Rec group because they truly went out and made those fields playable in a time where, quite honestly, we didn't necessarily have the resources to do it, but they stepped up. They took it upon themselves to make sure that that event could take place. I think we counted 2,000 girls, 20 teams, and that was outstanding. That's, I mean, or 200 teams, excuse me, 200 teams, not 20 teams, 200 teams were here in this town, spending time in our hotels, but also getting to play on our facilities. So I think that, I think you're on the right path. I think we have exactly what we need for now. I'd like to see that grow, and that's the reason why we're keeping this number where it is for now, until we get to the point where we can promote it and market it better.
This, if I looked at it correctly, we're doubling our budget, roughly? There's a amount I'm looking at right, from 900 and then adding a million to it?
Not, not doubling, no.
Are we just increasing to that amount?
It's, it's an increase of 10,000.
Okay.
I mean, excuse me, 100,000.
That's what, yeah, that's what I was asking, so if it was a double or if that's just increasing that?
No, just 100,000.
Do we know roughly, like, how many sports tournaments were done in the last year?
I can go back and pull it for you. I know that we participated in at least four that we held, or we at least helped host here in town.
Yeah. And I know some of them, when I've talked to the hot tax, and that's going back to this a little bit, is any of that going to be available to those tournaments to help bring them here?
Yes.
That's what some of them talked to me, they're like, well, Midland, Abilene, whoever, they give us some of that hot tax money to help post it.
Right, and we do as well. We have a sports incentive fund that we utilize currently, and that's where we promote that and bring those groups in.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Harry?
Just a real quick comment. I would like to see the, on this particular contract, that we take that clawback and allow them to bring it back to the council to tell us what they're going to do with it. That way, we make sure that it's aligned with what state law says and everything. Before I was on council, I was involved on the other side because I was part of the convention and visitors bureau at the time when we were negotiating first time with Michael Lane. So I know about the clawback, I've been on both sides of that. But one thing, though, is I want to say on this, 100,000, and I know it comes out of hot tax, but it's still sales tax money, or still tax money. In your KPIs, are we going to be able to see enough room nights to make that up?
I think we will, and I'll tell you why I think that we will. With the Datify analytics that we've done so far, just to give you an idea of that, with those targeted ads, we've seen roughly 4,800 attributable trips, meaning that they touched our website and came to this city. The estimated economic impact just on that particular targeted advertising campaign is a little over $680,000. So just out of that one little targeted ad that we're doing now, we're seeing that that return is coming back already. I don't think that we will have any trouble at all recouping the additional 100,000 if we're marketing properly, if we're doing what we need to do. We've got to make a website that's more engaging. Currently, our website has been the same roughly for the last five to seven, I think it's been seven years since we did a complete refresh. It's time, it's time to up that, up that game a little bit, make it more mobile-friendly because, again, we know that people are not just sitting at home looking at a computer. We've got to give them something that draws them here. You don't come here by accident. You're coming to San Angelo on purpose. And so when you're coming here, we want to give you that, that, an idea of what you're coming into.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Self, questions?
Do we work with the school districts?
We do.
Local and surrounding? And to kind of piggyback off of what Patrick was saying, there's quite a few tournaments that they'll have as well. And like if we all had one, they're going to have to stay in San Angelo.
Yes, sir. And we do, we are limited in what we can offer in terms of incentives to those groups just because of the situation that even the UIL has out there. But as far as servicing those groups, absolutely, 100%. The Need of Annoy tournament that was here a couple of weeks back, we helped host that. But when I say helped host it, it was just a servicing. We were providing blocks of rooms for those groups. We don't count that as a sale, we count that as a service.
That's also good advertisement for just the city as a whole.
Absolutely, same thing with ASU. Same thing with the Rec Department. Anytime we've got anything like that, that's a, that's a big part of what we're doing out there, is trying to be that community advocate for youth sports.
Okay, that's all I had.
Seems to me that you referenced it, I think, Tom, a little earlier. If not, it is in the caption for the, for the item that this, this document be negotiated by the city manager. It seems to me, there is a group now that I know has met with them in the past, maybe rather than us negotiating that right here, right now, we provide Daniel the direction that we would like to see him go with the contract and let them flesh out whatever those details may need to be, in concert with city attorney, to make sure that we are doing what needs to be done in keeping with the laws for hot tax funds. So that's my comment with respect.
Mayor, if I can pile on with Tommy, we're shooting for an October 1 implementation date for the new agreement for the DMO also. And the quickest way to get the information to the city attorney to develop the documents is to empower the city manager to give him direction for what he wants. And so I would agree with that.
And that's why the item's on the agenda the way it is at this point. So I know that the request for 1,49,000, it's about 100,000 more, it's about 10% more than we did last year. But I do want to point out, though, that previous years, we just haven't made adjustments either. So it's just kind of a justified request. I don't have an issue with council members with that request. I think the KPI is going to be key for us. Again, goes back to what I said earlier, right? This performance is going to be key for all of us because sales tax revenues, hot monies, it's really, really important for the city. So yeah, Tommy definitely would love to be able to negotiate that, look at the KPIs, make sure that we're good with the KPIs, that we may tweak it, maybe request a little bit more than what's being presented at this point. But regardless, just given the opportunity to negotiate the contract, we can get something hopefully by 10-1 and get that going and rolling on that.
So we'll need to read on what dates for this to be approved by October 1?
We can actually do it on, we can, we can do it on the first meeting in October, but also, again, make sure that we retro back as far as the contract itself to the first of the, the first of October, correct?
Yeah, we can make the effective date of the contract October 1.
Well, you know, we've done this one before. We've approved it on this one and made changes to it in the second reading.
What, I'm with you. Well, I mean, but we have, I was fixing to say, we're talking about the KPIs, not the dollar amount.
Whatever the council wants. If you give Daniel direction today, I don't think this has to come back.
Yeah, I think if you allow Daniel to negotiate and execute with the main terms of the amount, start date, I think you're good approving the contract today. And, I mean, I know the carryover will adjust that provision in the new contract, but as to the existing 17,000, I mean, I think we just need to look at their financials and what that would be used for and make sure it's appropriate, but.
I'm with everybody, so we'll take a vote today to approve the contract, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then give Daniel the authorization to tweak the KPIs as we see.
Well, and it sounded like, Daniel, it sounded like you might even, if they could see the need, if they saw the need for even a little more funding. I don't want to put words in your mouth that you might even increase that, Tom, so.
Well, the funding right now, the request of the 1,49,000, I think, is fine in itself. What I'm saying, though, is that the request is not unjust, again, because the past several years, we haven't made an adjustment for it.
Right, right.
So it's a 10% increase, and over the years, justifiably, they could have been asking for a 3% adjustment on an annual basis. They didn't do that. They're coming forth now saying 10% increase gives us to 1,49,000. It gives us the money that we need to really perform with the KPIs we're presenting. I'm good with that. It's just a matter of ironing out the KPIs and also making sure that the, anything as far as clawback that's coming back or any carryovers who kind of meets what the city is doing anyway, those, those have to be justified. Anything that has, that can carry over needs to be justified. And I agree with Harry that that should be also an item that comes back to city council for justification.
With that in mind, with that in mind, then, a motion to present, or to approve as presented would include direction to Daniel for the 1049 and change, and the KPIs as discussed, and then a bring back of the 17,000.
So move.
I have first from Harry Thomas, and I have a second from Karen Hesse Smith. Is there any public comment? Is everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Item B with subs 1 and 2 passes 7-0. We'll move on to item C, considering awarding ES0325 Chadburn Street Phase B Project Reese Albert Incorporated for base bid volume 1, base bid volume 2, and alternate 2, volume 2 in the amount of $13,288,242.06, contingent on TechStop concurrence and authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents presentation made by operations director, Thee Patrick Frerick.
All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. We are finally going to be doing Chadburn Phase B. Do you have any questions?
I'm liking it, I'm liking it.
Thank you, I'm ready to get started.
We don't want to delay it any longer, so. No, for real, we are very excited to finally move into Chadburn Phase B. This has been on our docket for a long time now. And we got the plans done, finally got the funding all lined up, and we got it, got it out to bid and received those bids. So just a little bit of background to catch us all back up. We did Chadburn Phase A back in April of 2020. And what that was, that was a full storefront-to-storefront rehabilitation of everything, the sidewalks, the streets, the lighting, amenities, everything in there. And I think anyone that has been down Chadburn Phase A can absolutely testify to what that has, what that has done for our downtown. It has completely transformed that particular corridor in a, in a great way, and we see the economic benefit of that as well. So just again, a little reminder of what that Phase A was. We threw in a bunch of stuff into that project to really bring some vibrancy back into that corridor and back into downtown. It brings life, it brings some creativity, and it brings some aesthetics to that area. That is very important for economic growth, for visitors' experience, the citizens' experience down that corridor. We really wanted to incorporate that, and I think we hit that nail on the head whenever we did that Chadburn Phase A. Chadburn Phase B is going to be a continuation of Phase A. So we are finally going to finish that corridor all the way to the loop. So from Loop 306 all the way down to the river, to the bridge at the river, you're going to see a cohesive design that is going to extend what we did in Phase A all the way through that corridor. So you have that same design element, that same feel throughout that corridor, and we expect to really, this to be the catalyst for the development that we saw in Phase A to continue in Phase B from a reinvestment revitalization of that entire corridor. It is going to be the same thing, a storefront-to-storefront rehabilitation of all the sidewalk and the pedestrian elements, as well as incorporating those features, you know, like bike racks and lighting and new trash cans and artwork and, and all the amenities that you see and that we love in that first phase. So we went through, we got the design done, and we published that bid, ES0325, in July 30th of '25. We got it back. We did receive two bids on Phase B. Tyzak Construction, who was the contractor for Phase A, and Reese Albert, Inc., our local construction firm here. Reese Albert was the lowest overall bidder for that, and they met all the criteria that we needed, or that we requested for the bid. This bid was a little unique in that, as part of the funding for the bid, we have a TASA grant that was distributed through TechStop. So if you all remember, we received an $18.4 million grant from TechStop for a pedestrian and sidewalk corridor all the way through, throughout San Angelo. And working with TechStop, we were able to break that into two phases. Phase 1, which is Phase B, Chadburn Street Phase B, and Phase 2, which is the rest of that sidewalk element. So this is going to be using that, that TASA grant, and that TASA grant is actually going to pay for every pedestrian amenity in Phase A. So a little over, a little over $4 million is going into that TASA grant funding. That's money that the city would have had to pay, but because we're awarded that grant now, TechStop, the state and the federal money is going to pay for that portion. We have a matching component of it, but we have that covered through the generosity of our tiers board. They gave us the matching component for those elements. The only thing that is going to be coming out of the city coffers, if you will, is going to be coming from the street bond funds, and it is only the roadway portion of the project. So a total of the project is going to be $13.2 million. The actual bid amount was 12.7, and we have $500,000 of contingency that we're asking council to award as part of this award. We know with these projects, especially one of this scale and of this scope, that there's going to be some changes that need to be made throughout the way. We want to be, have that flexibility and that funding set aside to cover that as we go through. All those changes as part of the grant application, all, everything that we do, everything that we change has to not only go through council if it meets the correct criteria, but it also has to go through TechStop for their concurrence. We have an estimated timeline, working with the contractor, of about 24 months to get this done. It is a few more blocks than Phase A was, so there will be a little bit of extra time. The good thing is, is we learned a lot of lessons on Phase A. That was our first time going through a project of that magnitude. So we, as staff, got to learn a lot. I think Reese Albert also was, you know, they had their eye on the project and they, they observed a lot. They are, you know, in our opinion, respected contractors. They know what they're doing, so we expect this 24-month timeframe to be well within the amount of time that we can get that full corridor done.
Patrick, let me stop you right there. How many are we waiting on Reese Albert for any? How many are we waiting on Reese Albert for any existing projects that are in line?
Excuse me. Reese Albert is working for us on, on a project right now. They are doing the twenty-ninth, the Edmund Glennor project on that. We don't expect that to impact this Chadburn Phase A project, though. Again, the way that construction projects work, everything works in phases. We do have the underground amenities done or ready on Chadburn Street, so we don't have to take care of that part of the project. That's always the frustrating part, is people see us start, and there's a whole lot of, of time and work that has to be done underground that gets buried, and, you know, the citizens feel like, oh, they're just not getting anything done. In this project, though, you will actually see a little bit visually, see more progress quicker in a more timely manner. Still going to phase it in like we did the first phase where we do block by block and we allow access to those businesses, working with the businesses, letting them know what's coming up, what the timeframes are. Again, lessons learned from Phase A, we're going to be incorporating, incorporating that into Phase B to have that minimal impact, but still get a pretty amazing project completed.
And that's one of my main concerns with, as on council, we're all going to get phone calls from some business owners, you know, you're parked out in front of me, I can't get in my door. I hope that we maintain the proper amount of time that we learned from the first project to give notices, as we always do, but I'm just giving heads up to everybody on council. We'll get phone calls and, you know, they'll be in front of Myers, they'll be in front of House of Chemicals, they'll be in front of everything up and down the street. We just need to be prudent, and we're all going to back the team here, get it done, but as quickly and fast as we can. I do have an issue a lot of time with contingencies. I think that throws the number out, that just allows you to mark it up to wherever you want to use the total contingency. I don't know if there's a way to regulate that. I'm sure there's not. That's just a pet peeve. I'm just whining, it's all done now. Go ahead with the rest of your presentation.
I think that was, that's pretty much wrapping it up. I think we all know what Phase A looks like, we're looking at wrapping that up on, on Phase B, getting that continuation done. Again, to your point, we're going to be working with those, those property owners, and I think the big key is there is, is to be honest. I think one of the, one of the downfalls, the pitfalls that we had with Tyzak in that first phase is we threw out a timeline that was extreme, extremely short, and we missed it, and that caused us a lot of consternation. The second part of it is, is we had a, a consultant doing the actual inspections of that project, and so we were relying on them to be kind of our liaison and our face. We're not going to do that this time. The city's going to be inspecting and monitoring that project, so we will have our own people be the face and the representative of the city on this project as well.
Well, and I appreciate you, Patrick. I don't want that misunderstood. I have a priority of using local contractors to the fullest extent we can, but I think as it's city and taxpaying dollars here, we need to be prudent on what's allowed to happen and what I think our cost overruns are.
Absolutely.
With that, I'll open it up to the diocese. Any questions? Mary? Karen?
Can we talk about Phase C?
Taking us out to the Coliseum, right? It's coming. Thank you, Patrick. This is exciting.
Mr. Keely. Harry?
I've already said what I need to say.
I doubt that, but anyway, on the Joe.
Utilities have already been updated in this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yeah, it should move.
It should move a little bit quicker.
Quicker, okay.
Hebert?
And, and real quick, sorry?
No, keep going. I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
Is a five hundred thousand, I'm kind of contradicting Tom, is five hundred thousand enough on a contract this size?
You know, typically we're.
Joe's up for reelection. Or recall.
Typically, we do run about a 10% contingency is what we plan for in our projects, but with this one, it just didn't feel right to have a 1.3 million dollar contingency. So we as staff sat down, kind of put pen to paper, looked at the design plans, looked at everything, because we've been through this reiteration four or five times with Tech Stop already, so it has been pretty vetted by multiple eyes. We feel like five hundred thousand will be, will be a good start for this project.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm glad we're not using any more, and that's great that y'all looked at it, so that just was a question. That's very good.
I think last time, a lot of variables related to a lot of that underground infrastructure that we ran into.
Right.
So since that's been taken. One question, are there, are there any upper power lines that they're removing this time?
They're going to be doing the same thing. Any overhead power lines are going to be either run back in the alleys of the, of the businesses or in condo and underneath the street, so you won't see any of that. Up until you get to the S curve by the transit district, the logistics of moving those power lines going underneath the loop, it, working with AEP, we did meet with them on site, and it's just, it's a nightmare to try to get those moved under there, so we made the concession that, in that first leg of that corridor, those will be overhead, but it's because of, the loop is, is causing a problem there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited. I think you've done your research, and it's good. Thank you.
Hebert?
Well, I was going to say the same thing Joe did, just to, just to kind of jab the mayor a little bit, but we're, we'll leave, we'll leave that one alone. I assume too, Patrick, you probably learned some things on College Hills Boulevard with some of those businesses along there. I know there's a couple of us at least sitting up here, I'm looking down at my friend Karen, that got hammered pretty good by some of those business owners. So I'm assuming there's some, some lessons we learned on College Hills that will help us on this project as well.
We did, and, and the difference between this project and College Hills is that actual work zone is going to be much, much smaller, it's going to be a block at a time. And so, the access to those, those businesses is going to be much more prudent. You're still going to have the side streets where you may have to walk around the corner of a block, but we do have the signage already prepared, or we, we are prepared to have the signage that says, these businesses, list them by name within this block, are open for business, and, you know, just mark it that as heavily as we can so that we have as little impact. There's going to be an impact on them, we know that it is with every construction project, it's the nature of what it is, but we do, we are cognizant of that, and we do try to minimize that as much as we can.
I think to the extent we can get out in front with notifying them maybe a little sooner than, rather than closer to, anyway, I think the communication part will be a key.
Yeah, we've only been talking about this project a couple of days now, so, you know. No, for a few years, everyone's well aware of it. Downtown San Angelo and Monica are well aware of the project, so they're, they're going to be helping us out with that, with that communication as well, so. We plan on making it as, as less impactful on the businesses as we can.
Mayor, with that, I'd move approval of this.
Let me make sure, Daniel, if you've got a comment you want on this, you go.
I'm good, I think that.
I just want to state what everybody already knows, you already call them Lee Patrick Frerick. They do a great job. I mean, Shane Kelton, Patrick, and really organizing and really put this stuff together, and the logistics of it can be an absolute nightmare, and they do sort of wonderful job, so thank you guys.
All right, with that, I have a first from Tommy Hebert, a second from Karen Hesse Smith.
One last question?
Oh, we're going to have one more question that just popped up.
So we've got to, the, the start date, I'm, I'm going to give you a, a general answer. So, we have the contract in Tech Stop's hands, as soon as the Tech Stop concurs with the contract, we'll get that executed. So, we expect a two-week turnaround on that. So hopefully, again, we run into that holiday period, right? So we're going to have to be kind of cognizant of, when do we start, where do we start, how do we start running into that holiday period around Thanksgiving and the Christmas time? So, I don't want to give you a solid answer right now, Karen, because there's some things that need to be worked out on that, but we want to get moving as soon as we can, but with as little impact as possible.
Sure.
We've got our end date, right? Within two years?
Within two years.
Yeah, you know what? Patrick, go ahead and ask your question, I'm sorry.
Just because of that, and that's such a draw for those businesses downtown, do we think we should push it until after the Christmas holiday?
So let us work with Reese Albert to talk with them about what that phasing looks like, and go through, again, you know, we started Phase A around that Christmas time, and we were aware of it. I think we actually pushed it where we started the big part of the project after, after the Christmas holidays, so we need to talk with them, feel it out, and, and really make a decision. We're going to do whatever is, while we want to get it started, we also want to make sure that we're being, being aware and being stewards to our business owners along that corridor as well.
Especially since we're so late in the year already, I mean, two months, I don't think we'd.
We do have. We also talk to them like we did last time about certain blocks of time, for instance, during Christmas. If they've gone in and started the project, that's fine, they can get some of the stuff done, we'll talk to them about trying to keep that stretch open during certain times of the year so that, that people can access from the front instead of going from the back. So we'll talk to them about that seasonal blip right there.
Harvey?
Mayor? If I might, one more time?
Absolutely.
Twenty more, twenty-four month project, and I've been babysitting this thing for already about six years. I'd like to have an invite back when you do the ribbon cutting.
I think we want it done before he leaves. All right, we'd like to have it done before he leaves. All right, with that, I've got a first and a second. Any public comment, Heather? With that, I'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With none opposed, item C passes seven oh.
All right, thank you all.
Don't go forward, Patrick. Consider authorizing expenditure not to exceed 1.8 million in matching funds for the purchase of qualifying properties and related activities under the NRCS Emergency Watershed Protection Program and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents presentation made by operations director, Patrick Frerick.
All right, so this is a follow-up from our presenter, or my presentation that we gave to you guys a couple, about a month ago now. Took us a little bit of time to find the funding and, and to really work through the details to the NRCS so that we knew exactly what we were going to be facing on it. So, again, a little bit of background, just to rehash real quick. The NRCS as an event, as a result of the July fourth flooding, has activated an emergency watershed protection program, an EWP program. Again, that catalyst of the July fourth flood. At that meeting that we had on August the fifth, council authorized you, us to participate in that actual program. We needed that authorization so we could let, submit the letter of, of interest to the NRCS. They've received that, they've acknowledged that, they're going through their due diligence right now. And then we, you also directed us to find some money for the matching portion of this. If you all remember, this program is a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match or split with the NRCS where the city's on, on the hook for twenty-five percent of the cost of that buyout program.
That should be 20%?
Twenty-five percent.
It is 25.
It is 25, yes, sir. Most grants are 80/20, this one is a 75/25.
I had it in my notes, it's 20, so I'm sorry about that.
So let me ask you this, Patrick. Are the properties approved already designated for this?
No, they have not been. So we've identified candidacy properties, we've turned that list over to the NRCS, and they're doing their due diligence on those properties right now. That is not a finalized list, but the list extends beyond the amount of money that we're, that we're advocating for today, so let us work through that. Again, since this is a completely voluntary program, I don't know how many of those property owners that are on the list are going to be willing to engage with us in this process, so. We have a list of, there are 75 properties that are touch, actually touching the floodway. We use that floodway.
Are commercial product properties included in that?
Commercial properties are included in that, yes, sir. Very few of them, but the majority of them are residential properties because they have the biggest impact, and most of those, there's obviously just more of those that are in the floodway than.
And I apologize, I was, that was the morgue of the complication, I was not here. My second question is, does the future designation of the properties, is it restricted for what the property can be after we buy it out?
Absolutely. It is, it is restricted in perpetuity. It cannot have anything built on it, it cannot be sold, it cannot be developed in any way that impacts the floodwaters that, that would touch that property. That's not to say that we can't do something with it, like nature trails or something to that extent, but as far as putting structures on the property, the properties will be specifically prohibited from that. That'll be in the actual title work, then when it transfers to the city's ownership.
So that is a non-negotiable, so let's take, if, if there's a house somewhere that was on there that somebody falls into this program, and it's surrounded by a lot of acreage, nobody could come in and improve that to make it, I'd say, compatible and is able to change it? Is that titled and restricted like a PD that we can't?
If, if there's a house on the property that we purchased through this program, we have to remove that structure.
I'm with you, but I'm saying in 15 years, if somebody comes back and they figure out a way with technology and ways to make that property safe, to go and put property back, is that restricted? There, oh, I was even only sneaking towards the front.
Legally, on the title work, it's going to say yes. Now, things change all the time, but.
Yeah, I think the deed will probably have restrictions in the deed, so the title work's going to, you know, show that, and unless those restrictions are somehow released.
And that's good, I mean, that's a good safety factor, but I'm just saying, beyond our council, beyond our terms, there may be other people that want to come in and say, I know the house on Short Street, that was Lake Short. I mean, that's a lot of acreage there that eventually can turn into something else. I would hate for it to just be restricted by one house.
Part of this program is, on those larger lots, we don't have to take the entire lot, we can split that lot, right? So, and some of those are, I do have them listed as full or partial on the list. Some of those properties, we, we only need the back half of it. The front half is fully developable still, it, it doesn't make sense for us to have that and restrict that entire property. I don't want to maintain the entire property if I don't have to.
Amen.
So I only want to maintain what I need to, to protect the floodway.
Gotcha. You agree with that, Erin? You walked up, I want to make it worth your trip.
Yes, Erin Vinoy, Director of Planning Development Services. We've identified this as kind of a step two process. There's step one, hopefully obtaining properties, and then going through a zoning process after our comp plan comes through of saying, all right, those properties really don't need to be redeveloped and having an overlay that says, okay, those can't be developed in perpetuity. That, that also is just a second layer of protection. Obviously, there are properties that may still be private owned, not city owned, and so we'll have to take that into consideration when we go through with that process. But that's them getting through this process first, how many can the city obtain that helps out the entire city, and then the second is going through a zoning process.
So, well, I just, sometimes you have those long-term, you know, we, we need to look longer than what we have here, and we don't want to handicap, you know, handcuff ourselves with something, the decision right in 2025 that might affect 35 or 40. With that, open it up for questions. Mary?
Yes, Patrick, wouldn't, at the previous meeting, council meeting, you were saying that, that, that amount for those homes to, for us to purchase those, was it 12 million is what you'd estimated? Now, 25% of that is 3 million, not 18, 1.8 million.
Correct.
So, refresh my memory as to the difference in the numbers.
So working with finance, this is what we were able to identify today as money that could be allocated to this program if council wishes to allocate that. I fully expect us to keep looking at that budget, keep looking at those numbers, and try to find that additional 1.2 to go there, to get to that 25% cost share. There's also some things that we can do through this program that are non-monetary, that would accommodate our match, so it's going to be a game that we, a coordination, I don't want to call it a game, a coordination to get there, but this 1.8 will give us a great leap forward to get those initial conversations started with those property owners that are interested in the program.
Are there any grants available that could help us on that 25%, help the city?
It cannot be law, it cannot be leveraged with other federal money. Excuse me. There is some, there is some options, and we're looking into that, you know, right now. The, the NRCS, this is the first time this local branch has, has implemented this program as well, so we're kind of walking through it together as we can. There is, we do have a resource that is working out of Washington that's been in this program, and she's been just a, a super amazing resource for us as far as information is, is concerned, but we're getting all those questions answered. The answer is maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Is there, has anyone in the Kerrville area, have they, are there any other entities, like Kerrville, other towns that are looking at this as well? And if so, what is, what's the feedback been on, on those, if you know?
I don't know so much from the Kerrville area. I know that the county is participating as well in, in this program, so they're looking at a few properties, not exactly to the magnitude that we are because just our density is much more than theirs are, they're dealing with larger tracts. But the county is, I'm assuming, this is a program that is activated statewide, so I'm sure we are not the only entities that's going in there. Again, there's an approval process, so once we identify the total amount of value that we need for the program, that's when there's an approval process that has to go through the Fed, they approve it, they allocate the money, and then we move through it. So, I, if I'm looking on a, on a horizon, we're probably not starting conversations with property owners on buyout until the first of the year.
Oh, okay, that's good. Have we looked at, and I'm sure you will, I'm not trying to needle you, on, are there, with Tomgarin County working with this as well, is there any chance for, like a force multiplier or anything with the county that we could, you know, help each other, piggyback and not us take the full brunt of it, that three million?
No, all the three million are within the city limits.
Okay.
And so, I mean, that line really designates where they can spend their money and where we need to spend our money. So, unfortunately, that twelve million is on us to accommodate, as far as the city's concerned.
Now, if we have some homes in there and those homeowners wish to not participate in this, I don't know if I'd dream this or what, but I don't, are they going to be able to get permits to rebuild or just a real heavy update? Or are they just shocked in the foot not being able to do anything?
It really depends on the, the specific location on their lot that they want to do something in. In a lot of cases, parcel, a part of their lot is in the floodway, part of it's in the floodplain. There's some accommodation that you can have in the floodplain that you do not get in the floodway. So, placement of structures, placement of homes, but even then, sometimes that cost of, of what you would have to do, raise elevation, et cetera, et cetera, is, you know, is cost prohibitive to do anything.
So this is kind of, there's no cookie cutter-
There's not.
With any of this?
There's not. It is going to be a specific, property-by-property, allocation property-by-property project.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen, any questions?
No, sir.
Patrick?
Hello, just a couple of ones. No, I, well, kind of along with what she was saying. I want to make sure, especially with Erin on that, and make sure everybody's very clear that they don't have to sell, but if they don't, then they cannot build at least on that property. I want to make sure all that is very clear to them so that they don't think they're fleeced.
Right.
And especially in some of those areas, we're going to have language barriers as well, so let's make sure we get people to be able to go in and talk to them and-
If, once we get closer to that time when we get to start talking to individuals, we'll do a marketing campaign over that. I don't want to put a whole lot of information out right now and get a whole bunch of people-
Right.
You know, excited about it and then say, well, in four months, we'll do something. I would rather wait till it's, you know, right there and then we can start moving with those conversations as they're fresh. But absolutely, that's part of that marketing that we're planning on doing. It's kind of getting, so that they have the full breadth of information so that they can make a decision what they want to do with their private property.
And then on that too, we've got, we've still got organizations and, and funds coming in privately, not city at all, that we don't want those to be, go spend on a home, start to build it, and then figure out, oh, they can't, the city's going to buy it back. So that's part of that, we'll just make sure we coordinate with them on, on those properties. And then on, on our paper here, it says it's eighty-twenty. So is it eighty-twenty or is it seventy-five, twenty-five?
It's seventy-five, twenty-five.
Okay. And is that math right? Like I said, I'm just looking at the paper here.
The background, the background does say twenty-five, twenty percent. It should not, it should say twenty-five.
It'd be one point eight for the city and then that's six point four for NRCS.
So, no, so if, let's go to the next slide, I think, I've got a breakdown of it, I don't. So basically, one point eight for the city gets a seven point two of NRCS money for a total of about nine million dollars in properties that we can go seek.
Yeah, that's twenty-five percent. And then also, it's more just point of clarification because a lot of misinformation got spread after the last meeting when we talked about this. This is not eminent domain, this is none of that, it is a completely voluntary program. And it is us trying to help those that are not going to be able to rebuild that are in the floodways.
It's an option that they can take, that they can enact if they, if they so choose to. This is not a taking, we cannot force the hand in any way, shape, form, or fashion. It's strictly voluntary. They must sign a paper that opts into the program, which starts the discussion with that property owner on a buyout option.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Patrick, you're asking like this is in your district or something or another. Any commentary? Mr. Self?
Is this going to require a lot more work on y'all's part?
You know, we figured we could do this while we were asleep.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it absolutely will. You know, this is not, this is not part of our, what I would call our core service, you know, that we provide, but this is absolutely something that we need to do. So we're going to figure it out. It's, it's going to take some more work on real estate, it's going to take some more work on our department. We're going to feel out that, you know, that burden, work with Brandon, since he oversees the real estate side of it, to see if we need to potentially hire some temp, temp work to assist or there or contract some of that out. But there's likely going to be an expense to help accommodate staff, just because we want this thing to move through quick. Even, once we start the process, we do have a finite amount of time to actually get everything done from the time that it, from the word goes. So it's, we don't have the luxury of dragging our feet, nor do we want to. We need, need some finalization for these property owners.
And that leads to my next question. Is there a time limit on when they can do this and when we can help them?
So, once we start the process and we enter into an agreement with them, we have two hundred and twenty days to fully negotiate it, fully vet it, and remediate it. So within two hundred and twenty days, they will receive their payment.
Within the NRCS or the homeowner, or the property owner?
That's the property owner. We have, so full remediation, remove all structures, recondition it, the property, everything is two hundred and twenty days. So, and we can't do any of that work till we actually own the property. So it's going to move fast.
Is there a time limit with the NRCS for the applicants to do this program?
I don't know. Once, so once we turned in our letter, the NRCS has sixty days from the time that they receive that letter to do their due diligence on the properties that we've turned in. Once they approve that property, that's the check mark that that property's approved for, for conversation. So after that, short of any environmental remediation or anything that comes up in our due diligence after that, it's, it's ready to go.
Okay.
Hebert? So, as we move forward this, and I appreciate Patrick's passion in this, but number one, this all started with a call from Carly Stevens at NRCS. Reached out the third day into the disaster and was, hey, come meet with me, talk about the program, got them in touch with y'all on the fourth day, and you moved it, moved it forward very fast, I appreciate that. But it's my understanding, once they did agree to participate, they're done with the property, the owner will be in and out. And a lot of those values are going to be based upon the two thousand twenty-five appraisals correctly?
Pre-flood.
Not the, yeah, pre-flood values, I need people to understand that. And that, that was a big question, but with that, I'll look for, has anybody got any further questions? I have a first from Patrick and a second from Karen Hessie Smith. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Item D passes, seven-oh.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Let's move into item E. We're running a little behind track today. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for a text amendment to Chapter Two, Administration and Personnel, Article two point oh seven, Boards, Committees and Commissions, Division eleven, Public Art Commission, Section two dot oh seven dot one six one, Creation Members, and Section two point oh seven dot one six two, Duties to Provide for Additional Commission Membership Qualifications and Duties, Providing for Severability and Providing for Effective, Providing for and Effective Date. Presentation made by Carl White.
Yes, this item has fairly simple changes to the ordinance regarding the Public Art Commission. Because it is an ordinance change, it does require two readings, the first one being on the regular agenda. I can go into the changes, but they're fairly simple. This all, this all goes back to the San Angel Cultural Affairs Council. In the past, they had, the city went into agreement with them annually, gave them some hot fundings, hotel occupancy tax funds, and they used those funds to grant to performing arts groups in San Angelo, the symphony, the ballet, et cetera. The San Angel Cultural Affairs Council dissolved last year. Late last year, the city picked up the torch and finished running with it and brought it to council and we did the allocations and the agreements with the performing arts groups. So we debated, what should we do following that? And where we landed on was, city staff would coordinate the process, would send out the applications, would send out the guidelines, and folks could apply, submit those applications. And then the Public Art Commission would review those applications, score those, meet on those, and then recommend allocations that would come to council for approval. A few meetings ago, Mr. Yuki Kuniyuki with the San Angelo Performing Arts Coalition spoke to council, I think during general comment, public comment. And he recommended that since the Public Art Commission was getting involved in this, that maybe we should look at having someone who's involved in visual, performing arts on the commission. I thought that was a great idea, he made a good point. So I took a step back, looked at the ordinance, and the result was some recommended changes to the ordinance. We took that to the Public Art Commission at the meeting last week and they recommended moving forward with these changes. So basically, I could read these or I can just tell you the gist of it, is that we would add, or it states under Creation of Members, "To extend available, the city council shall appoint to the commission at least one member who is a teacher or professor of art, visual or performing arts." We took out a reference to the Cultural Affairs Council because it no longer exists. So, at least one member who is a member of the San Angel Museum of Arts, of Fine Arts, or a local art organization, and there are several in town. Modified it to read, "At least one member who is a visual artist." Added a line that states, "At least one member who is a performing artist." And the rest of that section remained unchanged. And then only other change was, this doesn't involve the hot allocations and all, but since we, the art commission does, part of their duties reviews the placement of art, we added to state, "Evaluating and making recommendation of art that is proposed for donation to the city or for temporary display." I added that part, temporary display, because some of what the Public Art Commission looks at is temporary art. The Peta Sheep was one example. And then I thought about adding some explicit language about the role of the Public Art Commission reviewing these applications, but since there already is this phrase, assisting with related projects which the city council directs it to investigate, study, and make recommendations on from time to time, that's in there, it's pretty broad, it could include that, that role of reviewing those. I didn't add any explicit language regarding that. So, those are the recommended changes.
What I know is you have brought us a, something that was brought up by Yuki to add some performing arts people on here. You've cleaned it up, you've made it very clear on what needs to be on the board. I thank you for doing that. It was, Yuki didn't make that request like less than a month or two ago, I think is very good. Do we have any questions from council? I have a first from Harry Thomas.
Second.
And a second from Karen Hessie Smith. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
So this will come back at the next meeting on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Item passes, seven-oh. Item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, for one-time funding of projects and equipment in short-term debt, made by the finance person, Ms. Diersky.
Hi, Tina Diersky, Director of Finance. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So you have these budget amendments in your background, you also saw part of this in our budget workshops as well. These are some one-time funding sources that were needed. The first one is for a portable building for the police department at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Second one for body armor at a hundred thousand dollars, ammo at fifty thousand dollars, police department districting map at fifteen thousand dollars. The police department external evidence audit at seventy-five thousand dollars and additional equipment replacement in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the grid smart detection cameras for public works in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars. You did also see in our previous presentation that we would be funding three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the SAFER grant if we are awarded it, and then one point two million dollars for the city fuel site. Those will come back to you in a later amendment when we're ready to go forward with those. Additionally, there's a budget amendment for the short-term debt for the taxiway at the airport.
With that, you brought something back to us that we've all seen and gone over. I think next time, maybe itemize it, Tina, because we're all kind of looking here for paperwork, but it's something we've already seen, we already agreed to.
Okay, yeah, and it was in your background. I'm sorry we didn't have any slides. Yep, next time, we'll definitely have slides for you.
It's all good with that. Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Mary's got a question. Mary?
I understand the best practices being, putting this and amending the current year budget, and these are one-time only deals. This is just one of the eighteen calls that I had, I got this weekend. Why can't we put, why can't we add that to the, to our next budget? I mean, what is the, I understand it, but I would like to hear the public here.
You would not add one-time funded sources to an annual operating budget because it's not an ongoing expense that you would include in a budget?
Right, I understand that.
The only reason we can do these is because we had excess-
We had a surplus, right.
-fund balance and sales tax surplus. So we don't know that until the end of the year, how much we're going to have available. And so when we, as we go throughout a fiscal year, we're constantly getting requests from departments on one-time funding capital projects or assets. So we kind of keep an ongoing list of those. And at the end of the year, when we determine if we have monies available to help them fund those projects that they need, then we come back to city council and ask if we can do that.
That's our little brandy day pig, pig, piggy bank deal.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the surplus?
We had, I think, just under five million dollars in the surplus general fund balance. And then we had over a million dollars in sales tax surplus.
So roughly six million left over, and what was the total on these, this request that you?
And we're going to double-check this, just to hope you, no sweat, no pressure.
Approximately, just a little under eight hundred thousand on these ones. Just doing the math in my head, but you're welcome.
With that, I got a first from Harry Thomas. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Tommy Hebert. Any public comment? With no public comment, I'll take a vote. All in favor of item F, say aye. Any opposed? When none opposed, item F passes, seven-zero. We'll move into G. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by five million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred seventy dollars, which is nine point seven percent. And of that amount, eight hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-five, let me flip over the paper, is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. Presentation by Finance Director Tina Diersky.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Diersky, Director of Finance. Again, as you just said, this is the second reading and public hearing of the two thousand twenty-six budget and we will conduct a separate record vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase. The total operating revenues citywide is two hundred and forty-two million and total operating expenditure is at two hundred and forty-one million, leaving revenue over expenditure of one point four million dollars. Again, what was funded in this budget before you today, some items for public safety, the professional development and training and software package increases for the police department, overtime and fire apparatus for the fire department, additional animal service officers, and addition, or animal services, rescue services, software upgrades for HR planning and the website, retiree insurance, and five percent raises for employees. With that, I'll ask for a record vote on the adoption of the budget.
So this is for item G, correct? Heather, how do you want this to proceed?
Well, first you'll need a motion and a second, and then you'll just take a record vote going individually down the dais with a yea or a nay.
Okay, so I'll need a motion, I'll need a first? First by-
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know if, when I can insert this. I'm not going to vote yea or nay until I have some questions, so I don't know what the protocol is when you're about to go into a record vote, if there can be.
You would definitely want to get any questions that you have, if that's going to help, you know, sway your vote.
Do you have more questions for Tina, Mary?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I just didn't know-
I'm sorry, I thought you had it with your first round. Okay.
Well, after eighteen phone calls this weekend, I do have additional questions and I think I owe it to the citizens to reflect on that.
Please do.
This, it is a tax increase, right? It's not just a increased budget amount, but it is a tax increase.
There is a tax rate increase that you'll see on the next agenda item. As we've discussed in the past, we've been talking about this actually throughout this last probably six or eight months. That is almost entirely related to the Coliseum bond referendum that the voters did approve. Four cents of the increase, the total increase was point four zero three, I believe, I don't, I'm not on that item yet. But it was almost entirely due to the Coliseum bond referendum that the voters did approve. And when we went to the voters with that bond referendum, we told them it would be a four point seven cent increase. Evaluations came in a little better than expected, and so we actually didn't even have to increase to what the voters approved.
Well, of that nine point six seven, five point three three is for the Coliseum, point eight six is for the new properties that were added throughout the year, and then the three point five percent is maintenance and operating. Also, the only wiggle room we have in there is that M and O, right?
The M and O increased to three and a half percent based on new valuations coming in to allow it to increase to that amount without going to the voters for a tax rate increase.
Right, it goes below that new, between the new revenue and the voter approval.
It's right at the voter approval rate, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I realize that we went through this on the budget and we agreed. I just feel compelled, as, we were seven people up here that represent a hundred thousand people, and that's why I take their phone calls very seriously, and this may just be a matter of clarification. And looking at all that, we increased the taxes thirteen percent last year is what we, what we did. Reducing one percent of this-
There's a difference between increasing the tax rate and increase to property tax revenue.
Right.
The increase to property tax revenue is a result of increased evaluations.
Right.
Not necessarily a change in the tax rate.
Well, the tax rate did increase on them last year and we, we're capped at three and a half percent, and I'm- and I'm well aware of how that goes. The, I really, the concerns they have, and I know the flood has nothing to do with valuation for going in this year, has nothing to do with the tax rate. We now are looking at a possible $100 million capital investment, as per Steve Velinas's report. We don't have to ratify this today. We can do seven days later, which would be next Tuesday, the 9th, without having any kind of legal ramifications or slowing down or messing up any processes. I feel we owe it to the citizens to, for another look during this week. Maybe it compromises, whether it be phased-in increases. I would hate to reduce the 5% going to our employees. I just feel like it may, or it deserves a better look. Even though the flood doesn't have anything to do with the rates, as I first stated, it does have, it does affect the citizens' ability to pay these increases. And for some, it may not, you know, that 140 a year, that might not make a difference.
Those.
But it does, it does to them.
Those citizens that were impacted by the flood, there is property tax relief for them, and they can apply to the appraisal district for that, and they will be exempted for the remainder of the tax year at a rate equal to one-half of the tax year. So there are opportunities for them to be provided property tax relief in this situation.
There are opportunities. You didn't take the 18 phone calls, and I just, like, I wasn't hurt by the flood, thank God. None of us were, or most of us hopefully were not, but those that may not be directly affected, but they still got four or five inches of rain. I just, the citizens' perception is their reality. And I, I think it's a small effort to take this week and get the information that I request from Steve to see if that, what the feasibility and the effect that it could have on this coming year's budget. It may not move the needle at all, but I think it's worth looking at, because prior till today, I did not know about that 100 million. And I don't think it's a big ask for us to look at it on the behalf of our citizens.
Well, the budget that's being presented to you today reaches the 3.5% cap that the state has already limited our ability to provide services to our citizens.
Right.
They are currently looking at a 2.5% cap, which would even further limit our abilities to provide services to our citizens. At some point, we're going to look at cutting services. So I don't think that at this point in time is a good time to not go to the full 3.5% that the state allows, because we really need that revenue to cover the cost of public safety, much less anything else.
Well, I do, I understand that. I would like to see how that 100 million, or even 50 million, how that might affect the monies that we're going to get without reducing any services.
Mary?
That's, I don't mean to interrupt, but that's a projection. It's nothing, we legally are bound by a balanced budget of things that we know our revenues we're going to get. That 100 million from the chamber, it's a projection. They don't know what, it could be zero, it could be 100. We can't move forward not knowing exactly what we have from that.
Well, I think I'd like to give Steve the chance to provide that info. I'm just asking for seven days, or even less, but by September 9th is doable.
Are you done?
Well.
We have a motion on the floor.
Well, okay. I, those are the questions that I, that I asked.
I'll say that, even if they did bring in $100 million in capital, economic development, whatever, you know, investment into our economy, what that would do is, right now, we're at a 3.5% cap. We may be at a 2.5% cap next year, which would further limit our ability to provide services. If that 100 million came in, all it would do is create higher valuations, which would push down our tax rate. We would still be capped at the 2.5% or 3.5% regardless.
Right, but that burden of taxation would be shifted from.
What it would do is push down our tax rate.
It would.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, it pushed down the tax rate.
But we won't know that, like Tom said, until next year.
It would also take some of the burden off the homeowners.
Absolutely.
And shift that to the commercial, those commercial properties. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's a huge ask to at least have that knowledge from Steve and his team to see what that might affect. It may not do anything, but I would, I feel I owe it to the citizens, and so does everyone else, to take in every fact that we learn and do the best job that we can for them. And again, it may not do anything, but it's worth looking to see if it does. So I'm, that's all I have to say.
I have a first from Tommy Hebert. I need a second.
Second.
A second from Harry Thomas. Any public comment on item G, Heather? With that, we'll take a vote individually, correct? So we'll start with Tommy.
Aye.
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 No.
Thank you.
So with that, item passes, six one for item G.
Thank you, Tina.
You bet.
I'm not trying to put you or anybody else on the spot.
You're doing what you need to do. That's not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into item H. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance fixing and levying ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use in support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas for the 2025-26 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when all tax shall become due, providing when tax shall become delinquent, providing for the exemptions, providing for severability, providing for the publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Presentation made by Tina Diersky.
Thank you, mayor. Tina Diersky, Director of Finance. As you stated, this is the second reading of the property tax rate. Here's a breakdown of what that looks like. The total increase is 0.00403 cents. Almost entirely all of that is due to the Coliseum bond referendum, as we already discussed. And with this one, I do have some specific caption language, or motion language that I will need you to read. And this one doesn't require the record vote, just the specific language.
Can you go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to go, I'll need some people from history here. How long have we been at the 7544?
That was.
Or below?
Just this one year.
Right, but we had that for several years before. We were down, correct?
Yes, we were down.
But we've been at 7554, under, for what, 12, 13 years?
Under, yes, yes. The highest we've been in that time period was 776.
Right, gotcha. All right, I just need to, and Mary has really good questions, and I will say, we all get those phone calls from people on this, and we move forward, and I appreciate everybody's passion and concern about answering your constituents' calls. That's very important. But with that, we add the bond of .0403 to it, which was below what we thought it was going to be, so I think voters should be happy with that. Move on to your next slide, Tina.
Okay.
You ready for somebody to read this?
Absolutely.
I move the property tax rate be increased.
By the adoption of the tax rate of 0.7947 per $100 evaluation, which is effectively a 9.67% increase in the tax rate.
So I've got a first.
Second.
And a second by Tommy Hebert. And you don't need an individual, this was just a, so I've got a first and a second. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed? Item passes, six one.
Thank you, mayor.
You bet. With that, we'll move into closed session. Executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement that Meetings be Open under the following sections. Discussion Point, Item A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Approximately 10.08 Acres Out of the Abstract 0111 Survey 0320, F.E. Kramer, and 0.989 Acres Out of the ES Kirby Subdivision Block 1. We'll move into executive session, and we should be back in about 30 minutes. We will enclose session and come back in. We will do follow-up, item eight, follow-up and administrative issues. Item A, Consider items, discuss in executive session if needed. It is not. We'll move on to item B. Consider approving various board nominations, Civic Events Advisory Board, Andy Markey, SMD 6, to an unexpired term ending December 2025. Well, that's a pretty close ending date, isn't it?
Yes, that's because it's an unexpired term, then she will be appointed to her first full term, almost, you know, in December, and then she'll start her three full terms.
All right, do we go ahead and vote on that item? Anybody or everybody in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Andy Markey, with no nays. B passes, seven oh. We'll move to item C. Announcements and considerations of future agenda items. Consider scheduling one meeting in December, and consider one, scheduling one meeting in January on Tuesday. Heather, this is some topics you have.
Yes, council requested this at the last meeting. I think due to scheduling issues, it looked like the best date for December to have one meeting would be that first Tuesday, December 2nd. So that's up for y'all to confirm or suggest a different date.
Right, and then the January.
And then January, one meeting, meeting in between what we would normally do the first and third, and just meet that second Tuesday, being January 13th. That would put about a six-week gap there in between those two meetings for the holidays, vacations, things like that.
Awesome.
Let's do it.
All right, future agenda items?
Yes.
Mr. Hebert?
Y'all stay with me. Everybody's fully aware of what the state has done to us with 3.5% revenue cap. Well, as I understand it, in communicating with Representative Darby, that's now going to be 2.5%. The Senate apparently approved that out of the conference committee, and it's now going to the House at noon today. Drew told me this morning. So he, I won't speculate, but 2.5% is going to the House. That likely will pass. So here's, here's my agenda item. Folks, this is going to, this is going to require us as council members to do something we have never done, ever, and that is talk about what services we must eliminate. So Daniel, what I would like to ask for is workshops, work sessions, much like we did in June, but not waiting six months, not waiting three months, but we start in October with at least one work session per month. It's not going to be, we're not going to be voting on anything. I've got a list of things, I'm willing to read through them now, or willing just to visit with you after the meeting, if that's more appropriate. But we need to start doing that and see what services, what services we offer now. Again, I'll work through this with you if you want to, but that's something we've got to do. But folks, this is another topic that we don't want to discuss. And I think sometimes telling the truth is better than hiding behind the truth. Folks, we're going to have to look at a tax increase next year. If we're going to cover our budget, if we're going to pay for police and fire, if we're going to do the things that we want, we're going to have to cut things, and we're also going to have to look at more revenue. So I think we need to put that on the table and put it before the citizens and start discussing that now, and not run around with our hair on fire starting next year sometime.
Tommy, the, yeah, and the citizens will have to vote for that, though. And again, at 2.5%, we'll definitely max out on that, and anything above that will go to the citizens anyway. So, yeah, that's a good topic to start discussing, so.
So I'll give you what my thoughts are, and then you all can work through what we start talking about in those work sessions. But let's, let's don't, let's don't delay this. Let's get started and start moving through the process.
Will do.
And we'll also, I guess, if that goes through, what day, it'll fall in that parameter, but that changes so much to how we move forward.
It does. We'll know sometime today, I think, but it's likely going to be capped at 2.5. And with all that, happy talk, mayor. I'd move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a first and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, seven oh.